Evening, everyone. Se go ani buju endio wachea kuekue. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for the contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and mark side by side into the future. So with that as an official call to order, Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson. We have quorum. At this time, I would like to confirm that all members of council are present. On staff, we have Lanny Hurdle, Chief Administrative Officer, Paige Agnew, Commissioner of Community Services, Craig DeJardan, Acting Commissioner of Corporate Services, Peter Huguenbos, Commissioner of Business Environment Projects, excuse me, John Bolignone, City Clerk, Jennifer Campbell, Director of Heritage Services, Lisa Cavanagh-Hunt, Director of Building and Enforcement, Brandon Forrest, Director of Business, Real Estate and Environment, Jenna Morley, Director of Legal Services and City Solicitor, Tim Perf, Director of Planning Services, Karen Santucci, Director of Public Works and Solid Waste, Ian Semple, Director of Transportation Services, Akrishna Turner, Director of Recreation and Leisure Services, Mohamed Hassan, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Manager, Ryan Eboy, Acting Manager of Recreation Facilities, Janet James, Deputy City Clerk. Derek O'Shea is our meeting host tonight. Colin Taylor is here providing technical support. We also have two delegations tonight. The first from Sabina Islam and Islam Al-Khazati, the second from Jagdeep Singh Walia and Manpreet Kar. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have nothing under committee, the whole closed meeting. Next, we'll do the approval of the added. There are two amendments which we'll look to approve together. The first added has a motion of condolence and some communications. Second added has an additional delegation, an amendment to an item from Planning Committee, an amendment of miscellaneous business and some communications. Can I have a mover and a seconder for those added? Please move by Councilor Hill. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's Kerry. Okay, are there any disclosures of potential community interest? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we will move on. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have two delegations. So first, at this time, I'll invite Sabina Islam and Islam Al-Khazati to appear before council to speak to new motion number three with respect to anti-Islamophobia and Bill 21. And just remind her to our delegations that you have five minutes to speak, and then I will open it up to the floor to questions from members of council. So with that. Okay, so Khazati, the floors are.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Sister Sabina as well to join, but thank you for taking the time to meet with us. My name is Islam Al-Khazati. I'm the ISK Islamic Society of Kingston President. And Sister Sabina Islam is the, I know relation, her last name is my first name, but she is a representative on Islamophobia, on the file of Islamophobia. So I'll let her speak first.
Hi, I'm here, but it's saying the host has not allowed me to turn on my video. Oh, here we go. Thank you. Hello, peace be upon you all. My name is Sabina Islam. And as Brother Hassan said, no relation, but I'm the Islambulamia Awareness and Prevention Lead at the Islamic Society of Kingston. I've been a Kingston resident for 25 years. On Saturday, we commemorated the solemn anniversary of the murder of six innocent souls who were gunned down while praying at the Quebec City mosque. Many faith and community leaders, including Mayor Patterson, spoke of their solidarity with the Muslim community and the need to fight hate. Mayor Patterson pledged to support to this motion for which we are grateful. The violence that led to those murders and the murders of my family members in London this summer is not bred in a vacuum. It grows and festers when the sentiments which lead to it are normalised. Quebec's Bill 21 normalises Islamophobia, antisemitism, anti-Sikh sentiment, hate, bigotry and discrimination. Bill 21, others racialised and marginalised communities sending a clear message, not just a dog whistle, that hate and discrimination are acceptable, tolerated and encouraged by those in positions of authority. This is an important issue to Kingstonians because the effects of Bill 21 are not localised to Quebec. Hate spreads. The perpetrator of the New Zealand mosque attack cited the Quebec City attack as inspiration. After the London attack, at the vigil here in Kingston and in the days to follow, members of the Muslim community were targeted. Bill 21 normalises hate, and without confronting it, it will affect the lives of Kingstonians. This is not just a Quebec issue. This is a Kingston issue. Today, we are here to ask the City of Kingston to send a strong message to all those who espouse sentiments of hate that we in Kingston will not stand for it. We ask our mayor and council to not just show it with words or motions, but with action. We ask that the cost of this legal burden of standing up for religious freedom is not placed solely on the backs of racialised and marginalised people. The province of Quebec has their entire tax base at their mercy for this legal challenge. The playing field will never be level in this between the oppressed and the oppressive government, but we ask for your help to make it a little bit less lopsided. We ask you to be leaders in this fight for justice and not be complicit in the injustice. Thank you. And Brother Islam will continue.
So the second part, honourable members, the second part that we're discussing here is the systemic Islamophobia and the proposals by the National Council of Canadian Muslims, which has six portions to it, from community funding to building anti-Islamophobia advisory, public education campaigns celebrating the history of Canadian Muslims, investing in alternative measures to help policing and increase the opportunities for young Canadian Muslims within the city. So those are the six proposals that the National Council of Canadian Muslims is putting forward along with the part of the first proposal that Sister Sabina had put on. So we're asking for the sake of trying to be on the right side of history, I guess, for to quote a famous term, is to try and stop this. Canadians are a part of your community. They're a part of the fabric of this society. I myself am a serving member with the forces 21 years. There are others that are in strong, key positions around the city, from the medical sector to the engineering sector and so on, so forth. And we ask that those issues with Islamophobia, specifically two key things, which is to help funding anti-Islamophobia initiatives through bylaw changes to stop hate. And that's not just for Muslims, but it's also for all people who don't exactly, who might not, according to some people, say they fit the norm, newcomers to the country. And then also the second one, which is to have public education campaigns about the differences. You know, a key thing that we say in other circles is diversity is to be celebrated and not to be tolerated or accommodated, right? So and this is new parts of your fabric of your community.
Mayor. Thank you very much.
No problem.
At this point, I will open it up to any questions from council. Or any questions? Counselor Santic.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And through you, some questions to the delegates. Thank you very much for what you said tonight. Those comments really touched. And my one question is to Ms. Islam. I know that you shared with me through email some bad experiences that you had here in Kingston. But can you share any positive experiences that you had while people have seen you wear the hijab?
Thank you, Counselor Santic. So would you like me to share some of my, a little bit of both? Or?
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Okay. So in, so I've had experiences in many different places, unfortunately, but in Kingston, two notable ones, I would say, would be, one, when my children were in elementary school, one of them was ill. So I went to school to pick up the other child, to pick up some of that, my younger son's homework as well. So I had an armful of books and I was walking out in front of the school. And I also volunteered with the school. So there was a gentleman who was sort of looking at me. To me, he seemed somewhat confused, like maybe he was looking for a child or a grandchild he was supposed to pick up. So I approached him and said, you know, can I help you? And he just laid into me that, you know, why would they let someone like you teach at a school, teach our children? You know, and I basically froze at that point. So a lot of what he said, I'm not, I didn't really register, but the sentiment was that why would they let someone who looked like me, who was Muslim, teach children in a school? So offensive on many levels. And another is when I was at, my son played house league hockey with the Church Athletic League. He was the goalie. After the game, you know, all the parents were leaving. And this was at the Invista Centre. And somebody who I didn't recognise came up to me and handed me a pamphlet. And it's had something about Islam on the front. And I was like, oh, thanks. I thought maybe she was trying to like make a connection or something, and then she left immediately. And when I started reading it, it was the most hateful messages about my faith and about, you know, Muslim people. And, you know, as an adult, you're fine. I can deal with this like I was shaken, but I can deal with it. My immediate concern was this person knows who I am. Does she then know who my child is, who has his name Islam written across the back of his jersey? And will there be any repercussions for him on the ice potentially? So that, that was extremely scary. And you know, you think about when we walk into the parking lot, what will happen and so on and so forth. But on the flip side, I think me being in certain spaces leads to positive conversations. So I coach, I coach curling, and I've coached for almost 20 years. And, you know, kids come up to me and ask questions because I might be the only person who wears hijab that they've ever met. I might be the only Muslim person that they know. One young man on the competitive team I coached this year was quite excited when he's taking a world religion course this semester, or last semester. And he was really excited to talk to me about what he'd learnt about Islam and how well he did on his test. I remember when my younger son was in Montessori school and I started wearing hijab. And some of the kids were asking the teachers, you know, like Kamaran's mom looks different. What's that all about? And they asked me if I would talk to the kids about it. And the kids had, you know, all sorts of like very natural questions. And I was happy to talk to them about it. So I think it's important to be in spaces and to be able to share our stories and experiences. And I think it makes our society better by learning from each other and understanding each other rather than, you know, being afraid of each other and isolating people from one another. So I think it's, I think it's important to be able to express your religion, right? I'm not out there standing on a platform trying to convert people. I'm, I'm, you know, just trying to live my life, be a mom, be a, you know, do my thing and, you know, just like everybody else is. So I think it's important for people to understand that.
If I can jump on this briefly, Counselor, just to highlight, in 2015, an Angus Reid survey said that 44% of Canadians said they disliked Muslims. I don't know if in the Trump era, I don't know if you noticed it or not, there was a lot of vitriol that was said. That's not to say that everybody does, and there are positive experiences. But those negative experiences have an impact. And those negative experiences make people shy away. I have my wife and my three daughters who wear hijab, and they're routinely asked, where do they come from? My wife is New Brunswick. She's British Empire loyalist stock, but she converted to Islam. And my girls were born across this country. And when they're asked where they come from, the implication there is that they don't belong here. So we're asking that the contributions of those young girls, which are visible more so are women than the men, are respected, right? These girls could grow up, solve cancer. These girls could grow up and be the leaders of this country and make positive changes. And so that education part and the city being part of it, and that Bill C20, or correction, Bill 21 really institutionalises this issue of that they're different, that somehow it doesn't fit within our normal thing. And part of asking the city here to contribute to this effort is not only to say that that's wrong on one level, but it's also to ensure it doesn't happen anywhere in Canada because it doesn't happen until it happens. So that's primarily what we're trying to see. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think your next speaker, Colin.
Sorry, just coming off of it there. Okay, thank you. This was, this was answered to some extent, but I'll pose this two-part question. I was really mostly interested in what, what the delegations were saying in regards to the burden of individual Muslims in particular in fighting Islamophobia. And if you would, so I know Counselor Santic's question really kind of got to the, got to some aspects of that, but I'm curious if you had anything else to say about how we can share that burden as individual residents of the City of Kingston and as a representative body here?
Sister Sabina, do you want to start off?
Sure. I mean, you know, a part of the summit on Islamophobia in this past July talked about how the three levels of government could institute change to combat Islamophobia. So, you know, and that's why, part of why we're here today before you is to talk about what we can do locally. I mean, obviously, there's things that we can do at an individual level to make sure that we can become allies and educate ourselves and, you know, just learn to be accepting of one another. But, you know, that takes that onus on the average person. Like I, you know, I have concern with just relying on everyone to be good people because we have, we have discovered that not everyone is a good person. So I think we need to structurally address that. And that's what some of this is doing. I mean, you know, black, indigenous, racialised, marginalised people will tell you, yes, we're the ones that have to stand up and do the work usually because we're the, we have to live it every day. So it'd be great if other people took the, you know, carried the mantle and did the work. But right now, that's not happening. So we have to do it to make sure that society is safer for us, for our kids, for our grandkids. So if the City of Kingston, one can send this strong message saying that, you know, we, you know, we stand for something and we are going to actively fight when what we as a city stand for is being trampled on, basically. That's, that's important, right? Because as leaders, people look to what elected officials do. And, and, you know, right now, people are looking in Quebec at what those elected officials are doing. So we're, you know, as Muslims, we're looking at the rest of Canada and saying, hey, like, we need a little support here. And, you know, not just Muslims, but I'm speaking for myself. You know, that we need support to, to make sure that this doesn't happen somewhere else. And people are like, you know, yes, it's a Quebec issue, whatever. What's to say that tomorrow, this won't happen here in Kingston, in somewhere else in Ontario? So we need to collectively work to make sure that doesn't happen. I'm, hopefully, that someone answered your question.
Brother Hassan. If I can jump in on that one as well. So in any society, the elite dictates culture. Leaders dictate culture for any society. So you are leaders of this, in this community. And this council has set standards and sets patterns that are accepted or not. We're living through it now with some of the regulations that get placed in order to say what's acceptable and what's not. So what we're asking for is things along the lines of celebrating the diversity. And this is not just, Islamophobia is only a part of a larger issue of hate and marginalising certain groups. You have a lot of potential within, we have a, we have a lot of potential within Kingston and Canada. Kingston is becoming a more attractive place for people moving in here. I, for one, I grew up in Toronto, but I have now, being in the military, I'm hoping to stay here for a while. So, and potentially for the rest of my life. But so we have, you have a part in celebrating the diversity that's available in your city. Part of it is, you know, a simple example for education is the town square is beautiful, but there are Christmas trees that are put up for Christmas. What about every other holiday that the community has that should get recognised, right? From today, yeah, being the first, is the Lunar New Year for the East Asian community. Also, you know, Diwali was in the fall. Ramadan is coming up shortly. There's Eid. Those, those should be opportunities and that square should be made public for celebrating those things. Or even a simple message that goes up there. Those little things do count in that it allows people to be educated on sort of the celebrations that are going on within their community. And hey, why not have, have that square partying it up every, I mean, not the Queen's students, but just to throw a little dig in there. But for the general community abroad, across, across the spectrum. You know, ISK might, I don't know. I have to talk to the other people, but we might ask to have Eid prayers there at the end of Ramadan in the square, if that's feasible. Anyways, those are, those are little things, but it's setting the culture. It's allowing the, the community to see that you're more accepting of everybody. I don't want to take up the time, but there, you're over to you.
Thank you. Deputyer Holland, do you have any other questions?
Oh, no. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there any other questions from council? Counselor Shapell.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I appreciate the presentation from Sabina and Islam. My question is, this motion that's being before the, the, before us tonight is sort of broken into two pieces. And I'm very interested in the six proposals that are performed by the Muslim community as to how to address Islamophobia. And I think they're very productive and positive ways. And yet, there's this issue of money being allocated to a court case outside in Quebec. And I'm just wondering if that money would be better spent actioning these great proposals rather than, than spending the money outside of the province? And I was just wondering if I could get your opinion on that.
I guess I'll go first again. I think both are important, right? I don't think we need, I don't think it's a choice where we have to say we will do one or the other as a city. There are, there's definitely, you know, I'm, I'm sure the city has funds allocated to do equity, diversity and inclusion work in the City of Kingston. You know, there's a new Equity and Diversity and Inclusion Committee. There's a new program manager for that. So it's obviously a priority for the city, and those funds will be there. You know, we will partner with you as, you know, in whatever way we can as a Muslim community to, to move that forward. But I don't think it's a, it's a binary thing where you have to do one or the other. The, you know, Bill 21, for all the reasons that we've stated, it's, it is a problem for us, right? As long as that is a law, this is an issue in Kingston. And, you know, maybe it's, maybe for someone who's not, who, maybe for someone who doesn't look like me, it's easy to say that, you know, let's just do a couple, you know, some things in town and you guys should be okay. It's bigger than just, it's bigger than just, you know, yes, these seven recommendations for the municipal recommendation for NCCM that we're proposing through NCCM are important, definitely. But as a Kingstonian, if I go to, even if I just travel outside of Kingston and go a couple hours away from here into another province, should I be subjected to bigotry because the state sponsors that? So I think if, it's really important that we stand up and, and show Kingstonians as well. Like, there's a large Muslim community here and not just the Muslim community, you know, other communities of faith, that this is important to us. And, you know, again, through the centuries, we've had to fight our own battles. And we're asking you to fight alongside us, right? And part of that is, the way this world works is money. And that's just reality. Brother Hassan?
Let me just be clear. This isn't just about Islamophobia with fighting Bill 21. Let me be clear. There will never be with this law a Sikh visibly Jewish person wearing a yarmulke or a hijabi woman within the civil service of Quebec, an entire province within our Greek country. As long as that exists, there is the possibility of that law being sort of adopted by somewhere else. So that's the, that's the kind of fight that we're looking at. And it's not just about secularity there because there are still very Christian symbols that are, that are available and visible within Quebec. So that's, that's, that's why we're, it's important to help fight this issue across the country. And even if some, for political reasons, in the federal and provincial governments do not choose to do it because they don't want to anger a certain segment, a certain government, that is, that is still an important fight that has to happen. And it's still going to be hanging in there as a potential for somewhere else to be adopted. And again, the ultimate issue is then, then there is no, and the ultimate result is, there will be nobody that visibly, they have to stop practising their faith, whether they be a Sikh man, a Jewish man with a yarmulke or a Muslim hijabi woman. So it's not just about, about us as Muslims. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Shapell, if there's no follow-up person, I'll move on to, next is Counselor Neal.
Thank you very much for your delegation. Would you be able, I agree with you that we need to get beyond just, we need to accept holidays and recognise the whole community. Would you be able to forward to the mayor and council a couple of weeks before a significant date with recommendations? And if either the city staff would take that up or a motion could be written? If you could do that, that would be great.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Counselor, and opening the door. We're dealing with it on base, to be honest. There is a multicultural council, or sorry, calendar that is held that I can easily forward to you folks or to, to the city staff that has all those holidays in there. And again, what I'm, what we're saying is, if, if, like a proactive stance where it's recognised in some way, where they're added, those key holidays are sort of added on to the city council. Because I know, I've heard the mayor before and different levels for Eid, they'll come out and say happy. And then, then there was a. MP Girardson today said Happy New Year for for the Lunar New Year. So those calendars are out there and. Gladly, easy enough, we could easily ask if we're going to use the space, obviously, or if we want to use the space, we'll definitely ask in advance. To the to the mayor, but there is a calendar, standard calendar that that's available. For all those days for for the different cultures. Thank you.
That's great. I look forward to that. Thank you.
If I can just add to that. My kids went to Limestone District School Board, and I will give them a shout out for being very proactive in that regard. There. There's acknowledgements on. Social media at least for every holiday, for every faith group, cultural group, like they do a very good job at limestone. I think part of it is they they do have like an equity consultant. Who oversees that, but you know, we have so does so does the city now, right? So. But limestone does do a great job for that. So we could probably get their calendar to you as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you both very much for your delegation. And at this point, we'll move to our second delegation this evening. We will invite. I deep sing Walia and Manpreet Kar to. Council again with respect to new motion number three for anti Islamophobia and Bill twenty one. Well, yeah, welcome, and you have the floor. I I believe you're on mute.
Okay, honorable mayor and council members. Thank you for inviting us and giving us the delegation chance. I'm sure Manpreet is here, so I. As a due respect, I would say that women should go first, so and then I will go later.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Manpreet Kaur, and I'm here on behalf of Kingston Sikh community. So I, as a Sikh woman who wears a turban as a part of my identity, strongly oppose the Bill twenty one. It is a direct attack to our religious freedom and liberty of expression. In Sikhism, both men and women are treated with equality. So both can wear a turban. Sikh women are working hard and doing very well. In schools, in research, doing their PhDs, holding various positions in government and public sectors. Serving in Royal Canadian Navy and wearing a turban as a part of their uniform. Working as teachers and professors as well. So according to Bill twenty one, we would not be able to hold any strong position. In various position. Various professions, working at government. Offices, putting our skills to use in research or teach in a school or university. So limiting our opportunities solely on the basis of our attire would be a total breach of human rights. Today, thousands of students are studying at schools and universities all across the Canada. Wearing religious symbols who might feel oppressed. To pursue their future due to this legislation. These religious symbols such as my turban is not just a piece of fabric. It is a part of my identity. It is who I am. So I certainly. Stand with everyone who is against Bill twenty one, which directly targets the minorities, religious minorities. By limiting their participation in various professions. Thank you.
Thanks, Manpreet. So I am speaking as as the president of Kingston Sikh Cultural Association. We have Sikh Gurudara here. People who don't know what Gurudara means, it's the same thing as a Sikh church or church. And as a voice of Sikh community, I would say that we are totally against Bill twenty one. Which got passed in Quebec. I don't know how it got passed, but it got. It basically restricts bearing religious symbols from public office positions. It is an act of violation of basic human rights. Putting a cloth or a turban on head doesn't change my educational thinking. Or even delivery. Of my services. If I'm a surgeon. Will my turban change how I do the incision? No, it will not change. It will not make me a biased person. Removing the head covering doesn't remove my faith from my brain. Like if you want to remove religious thing, you have to cut out some part of my brain. Otherwise, you can't take out the symbolism because the symbol is actually inside my brain. Which is required for disposition. So if you want my brain to work. For these positions, then you need to have me completely here. So I keep long hairs as most people do. And Bill twenty one wants us to leave our turban in car. When we go to the office. So when I leave my turban out. I will be working with with my naked hairs. So that will be basically telling me that you go and work in as naked position. You're not telling other people to go and work as naked policeman, naked. Some politician. I think that's what Bill twenty one is asking for people to do. What's coming next for state to be neutral when they call it neutral for religious symbol? Now hairstyles, dresses and nail sizes. Like tomorrow, if a new religious system comes and someone says, oh, the three centimeter of hair is Catholic religion and four centimeter of hair is. Islam and five centimeters is this religion. So how would you remove those religious symbols? Are you going to just make everybody bald? No, so there is no end to say that this is religious symbols dictate. Who can take or make it. Secularism in a in a state, you can you can separate state and religion in different ways, but not from symbols. We in Kingston are growing invisible visibility of six as many students are coming and settling down here. Many new families are moving from GTA and settling here. We want to tell them that we in Kingston believe in equality, so we do in Canada. It's not a question of representation, but it's a question of inclusion. We six with our other fellows, Muslims, Jews. And sometimes even indigenous people are all part of the same ball. We call it salad ball. Of different colors. We stand with our fellows who strongly oppose Bill twenty one. We humbly ask City of Kingston to stand with us to oppose.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I'll open up the floor to questions from council. Are there any questions?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Thanks for your presentation. In fact, the entire discussion, the previous delegates as well, I think. It's been really rich discussion, and I believe a lot of people learned from what we're what we're hearing and. And. And we and there was the suggestion of creating a celebration. When there are festivals. At Market Square, which I I think is fantastic. I think we'll all be so much richer. From sharing festivals and and celebrating diversity. But I just wonder if you could speak to having some of the tougher discussions, because I think racism. Is oft comes from a place often of ignorance and fear and and just not knowing each other. So how can? What can we do? To to increase. Opportunities for education, for getting to know each other, not necessarily through. Through celebration, which is fun for sure. But having deeper conversations and deeper opportunities to learn and and to deal with some of that misinformation that is out there.
Right. Manpreet, do you want to say something? Shall I say?
I think you should go ahead.
Okay. So I think that the. The inclusion has to be dealt at multiple different levels. We learn. Our all fears and unknown things at in our school. Right at birth. And after the our education comes right from school. So at the school level, we need to be more inclusive and more teaching, more inclusion. Take the fear out of unknown that, oh, what is having a a turban or a hijab? Does it make any difference in in the human being? We need to teach humanity more than religious symbols. And you can have different kind of hairstyles. Same thing is that you can have different religious symbols. But that should not change your identity. You you are a human being first, and that's what needs to be implicated to our children. So once we have taught our children what inclusion is, that. That will change how they perceive the world when they grow up. So that's education level. We are not doing enough at school level. First of all, I totally agree with the. Sabina that there are very good equity office in Limestone District School District Board. But having a calendar and having some celebrations is not enough. I have always told that and it's it's going to be that way. The second thing is. At the higher level, at university level, are we doing enough? So that people can embrace different kind of colors and symbols. No, we are not doing that. And and then even after university, so post educational, when we go into our jobs and we are in our twenties, thirties, forties. Those people need to be taught as well, and there is entire generation which is. In sixties, seventies, they don't even. They it's hard to bring change in them, but we need to make some changes at that level as well. So we need to have some some TV series, some regular TV advertisements going on. There have to be some. Regular functions from City of Kingston, which can promote equity, diversity, inclusion. So it has to be dealt at multiple levels.
Thank you, and I have just a quick follow up question. And that is with the perhaps an opportunity might be if we help fund. The legal challenge that. That we could organize something around that, because I'm sure even that that process and the legal challenge could be quite educational for our community. So. I'm looking forward to supporting this. One of us and and learning from everybody involved, including how this legal challenge will go. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Next is councillor Chappelle.
Mine is more of a more of a comment, if I can. I. I fully understand and appreciate the.
Just phrase it into a question.
Okay. Okay, this is a personal question, then. I had an opportunity this past summer to attend a Sikh wedding, and it was absolutely phenomenal in the GTA. And being close friends with the groom, I was able to wear a turban. And. How do you deal with the pressure after about three hours of wearing the turban? What what you do to release it? I know it's. That I just want to say that I really that that immersion of that culture and what was originally said by Manpreet about. Sitting and having a dining and everyone's equal. What a beautiful culture. So thank you. I just and how do you how do you address the the pain in the head with the pressure of the turban?
Yeah, you wore it for the first time. Maybe that's why you you felt the pressure. When you wear it every day. You don't feel the pressure. It becomes part of you. You 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 wear beard every day. I don't think that you will know that you have a beard.
Good point. Well, thank you. And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council?
I guess I also want to say anything else. There are many people who oppose having even hairs, the burden of hairs. Because that's bothersome to many individuals, so they become bored. Is is our hairs can be bothersome and and weight some. It's just a perception.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Thank you both very much for that that delegation. And with that, we'll move on in our agenda. Thank you. So moving on, we have no further delegations. This evening, we have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Okay. Moving on, we do have one motion of condolence moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Holland. The sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Craig DeShirbet, city's acting commissioner of corporate services, in the passing of his mother in law, Mary Elizabeth Ball. She passed away on January fourth, twenty point two. Mary was a lifelong learner and a passionate advocate for healthcare and education, always looking to make the world a better place. She was a proud Kingstonian and loved her community. Mary will be greatly missed by all who knew her, and her thoughts and prayers are with her family and friends at this difficult time. Call vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's. Okay, we have no deferred motions this evening, so we will move on to reports. First up is report number twenty from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Chappelle, seconded by councillor Bohm, that report number twenty from the chief administrative officer consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so there's just the one clause. Award of contract layout selection provision and maintenance of fitness equipment for the Kingston East Community Centre. You will call vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Except for the report number twenty one from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Hill, seconded by councillor McLaren, that report number. Twenty one from the chief administrative officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, clause one, weather based parking ban pilot project.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you, I want to start by thanking staff for this report. I know that the timeframe actually moved up, so it's nice to have this before us now. And I had one or two questions. Based on the experience of other municipalities, which were laid out in the report, which is also very helpful. So. Perhaps staff could talk to us about the fee structure, the fines. I'm wondering why we haven't increased. What we're charging folks who who break the rules essentially, regardless of what those rules end up being. I know in Cambridge, for example, it was an eighty dollar fine as opposed to our thirty dollars. So. Is there advantage or disadvantage to increasing the fines?
Commissioner Joyce?
Thank you and through you, your worship. It's a good question. To be honest, we looked at the fines. The fine would have to be. Approved by the solicitor general, and there just wasn't enough time to adequately set what that should be. And make application to the solicitor general, but it's something that's going to be evaluated down the road.
Okay, excellent. So if this pilot project goes forward. That can be a consideration if it moves to full implementation.
That is correct.
Excellent. Okay. And then my second question was about the hybrid model that's proposed with. Sometimes of outright ban and sometimes of weather based event bans. I'm trying to think about how this would be as intuitive for residents as possible. And I'm not sure if I'm convinced what's proposed is that. And the reason I say it is because. If we move forward with recommendation, we have a December weather based event ban and then two months. Of an outright ban and then back to a month. Of weather based banning. And I'm wondering if there's a way that could be simplified, just for folks to be able to come on board a bit easier.
So through you, your worship, it could be simplified. I think that what we're trying to achieve is a bit of a balance for the for the pilot. Program. That would give us the shoulder months, which is, you know, there's less risk of intense. Storms during those periods. And so. We're trying to achieve that proper balance between the two. I think the communication is going to be key. With all of this, we've we've got to make sure we do as much as we can to try to communicate. First of all, when the bands are in place and also how you get notified when a weather based ban event is is occurring. So I think that by by doing it both in December and March, it's going to give us more data that we can use to analyze. Then what makes the most sense for Kingston, based on our own conditions here. To for a longer term. You know, a permanent structure, what that structure would look like. So the idea is to have, whereas it would be simpler if we just said, yeah, only March, or we said only December. But to be fair to the residents as well that that are looking forward to this concept. Doing it both in December and March would make sense, I think, especially for the pilot to give us the data that we're looking for.
Yeah, great. Thanks. Count me. Oh, sorry, Mayor Patterson.
Yeah, sorry, I was just, Ms. Santucci also has her hand up. Just wanted to give her a chance to jump in with anything else.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Thank you. I think the one other thing to add to that is we know that during December and March. There aren't as many events. So if you're really basing that on the months where you're not having a huge number of events or continual events. To factor those out.
Yeah, just quickly then, thank you for those responses. I think collecting as much data as possible for the pilot is a really great response. To support this. Thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, I just wanted to thank staff for their work on this. It's been a long process to try to get here and I know that many other councils have been supportive of this as well. I think some of the big questions that some of the residents are asking is if the pilot is successful and we recognize that, you know, it's completely doable. Is there potential for further adjustments at other points in the future? I know I've already had that question a few times.
Thank you, Counselor. And through you, Mayor Patterson, the answer is yes. You know, what we want to do is look, do the pilot, assess it, get feedback, adjust the program and determine what the permanent program would look like. Would it be two months? Would it be three months? Would it be four months? Would it be zero months? What would the fines be? So, there's lots of opportunity, I think, for us to make changes to the program following the pilot.
Great. Thank you. One of the things that actually came up from a resident was we have the garbage notification app. So, if going forward, if we were to maybe try this, maybe it might not work with this pilot, but possibly in the future, we could also have people download an app that would possibly send out a notification to say, you know what? Snow is expected in excess of five cent or whatever the number is, five, 10 centimeters tonight. Please move your vehicles from the street after 1:00 AM and keep them off the street until whatever the time is, 9:00, 10:00 AM. So, is that something that we would also be looking at as part of the pilot going forward to help with the communication side of things?
I see both Ms. Santucci and Commissioner Joyce. So, I'll let you guys fight it out. Who wants to jump in first on that one?
I'll start and perhaps Director Santucci can add in. So, the simple answer is yes. So, we have thought about different mechanisms that could be utilized, particularly in long-term, using some apps of notification methodologies that could be used, using technology, using signs on the street, all kinds of things. The communication is really going to be a key factor in all of this. So, we're probably not going to get it perfect by any stretch of the imagination for the pilot. But hopefully, by the time we come up with a permanent program, we'll have ironed all those things out. And I'd love to see an app that could do that, whether it's even something within Google Maps or Waze or whatever, where I park here and something alerts you whether you can park there at the time. There's lots of different options, I'm sure, that are right there.
Amazing. Thank you. I know that's going to be very well received. Appreciate the answers. Thanks.
Next is Counselor Hill.
Thank you, your worship. And I am really pleased to see this initiative as well. I think this is great. And I do want to congratulate staff for the work they've been doing through this last month, because it has been a lot of snow. And so, thank you for that. But I guess my question is around, you know, we've come a long way now to meeting the needs of drivers in the community and people have to park their cars in the streets. And I think we should do that. It's the right thing to do. But I also think that, you know, we now need to say to them, okay, you have an obligation here now to meet us halfway. And that means that on those nights that those cars need to be removed, they need to be removed. And I know this is a pilot and we'll sort of hone the fines and removal of vehicles at some other point. But, you know, I know that in, you know, years gone by, you know, failure of people to remove cars, especially along arterial routes, has led to, you know, snowbanks that kind of, you know, creep into the middle of the road and block bike lanes and all that sort of thing. And so, I really hope that as part of this, as sort of our effort to kind of meet drivers somewhere in the middle, that we also are really, really strict about how we proceed to make sure that cars are removed and that the penalty is substantial when people fail to do that. Because, and I know it'll be done through education. I assume that. But I think that's a really important part going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Joyce?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Counselor Hill, we have considered that. And in fact, we noted it in the report that this, doing this kind of weather-based ban would likely require us to be, have a less tolerant approach to vehicles being parked in the places.
Okay, thank you. Next is Counselor Senic.
Yes, thank you, your worship. And I just want to thank staff very much for bringing this forward. I'll be supporting it, especially in December every year. You know, we've gotten many complaints over the years of people thinking that was just way too soon to start a winter parking ban. So, what I like about this initiative is that it's a pilot project. And to Counselor Hill's point, it's now up to all of our residents in Kingston to either really embrace this new policy and be courteous and respectful and move your car when we have a winter event in December and March. Or it's up to the community to basically blow this opportunity and, you know, be irresponsible. And then council can say, well, we tried it, but it just didn't work. At least now we know, because we've had complaints over the years. And so, now it really puts things forward as to, okay, let's see if this is going to work or if we, you know, can say we tried it, but, you know, for what Counselor Hill said, yeah, it's just going to be too many times the clouds are going to have to circle back, clearing the snow from the cars that were parked. So, we'll see what the, how the community takes this. And I also really look forward to that this will, if this passes tonight, it'll come into effect March 1st. So, if all this snow we're about to have over the next few days, if it all melts by, you know, the end of February, then, you know, like March 1st can be good. We can all be parking on the street if we have to that night. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's good to be Counselor Senic. Anybody else that wants to speak on this? Counselor Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the comments, particularly what Counselor Senic said, the pilot project. But I just feel that someone needs to interject the note of reality into this. The report gives us almost two pages of reasons why this would be developed in various ways. And that's particularly true in parts of the city where there's no boulevard. There's nowhere to put the snow. So, I know in my district, you get the windrows or snowbanks and they're hard and difficult to remove. And it is, the city has an incredible amount of time and money removing them. And people complain, of course, as the snow from the road goes into the sidewalk and the snow from the sidewalk goes into the road. And it's also, is a point so difficult and even dangerous for the snowblower operators. We've had this before. The cost is a bit breathtaking based on previous reports. I think it was back six, seven years ago, it was about 185,000 or something, number like that. And I've seen people park on the streets. And the, what people don't perhaps forget is that when there's a vehicle in the street, plowers just start pulling around at least another house with before it gets to that car, because they are large and they have to get around it. So, my concern is what the people who don't want or don't need to park on the street are going to say about this once they see how it works. Because if there's two or three cars on your street, then they're going to be missing a lot of the roadway that they would normally plow, but they can't. So, this has to be looked at before. And these are the reasons, the report does a really good job explaining why we've done it before, including risk aspects for pedestrians, for those who are disabled, for other drivers. So, I don't know how, I'm tempted to vote against this because we shouldn't, to me, we shouldn't be doing it. Because, I mean, I'm all for voting for pilot projects, but we've had it explained to us why it's not a good idea. And I think that we bad in certain areas where people will not like the results. And so, I'll leave it at that. I think we have to take these implications into account in that we're increasing the risk for others, including recycling workers and garbage workers. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Counselor, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Santucci, did you want to touch on that?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Just in response, I think part of the rationale behind the pilot program, and I know there's a lot of reasons that are listed as to why things, how things could possibly get more challenging. But the December and the March was typically, was specifically targeted because those months tend to have things between them where the temperature can get warmer. And although we're plowing, it also gives us the opportunity of weather to help us deal with some of the issues that may arise. That was part of the rationale between those shoulder months with the program.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Counselor Osteroff.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson. I do want to thank staff for the work that's been done on this. Even as a real counselor, I suppose you could think I don't have that many issues related to parking, but I do have few in the hamlet areas. And I understand that parking, and I think Counselor Hudson does make, he does raise the concerns that we are going to experience. But I, you know, it's an emotional issue in subdivisions and tighter communities which we have. So, but I think it's worth the try and I think it can bring some relief. And I think that the technology that we have, as Counselor Bohm has indicated, there's going to be great strides there too, and we might be surprised by its success. So, I'm willing to support this.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Neil.
Thank you very much. And thank you, staff, for putting this proposal before us. I was a teacher for 30 years and March is a strange month. I've had years when we've had two or three snow days in March. I've had March breaks where everybody was wearing T-shirts. So, I think it's a reasonable approach to take what you're proposing for December and March. And it's one of the main and most frequent complaints. And everybody always points to Ottawa and other municipalities that have a more open approach to it, which is what you seem to be proposing. And so, I will totally support this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, we will call the vote on clause one. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Strop.
Your worship, is my shirt blending into the background or something?
So, your background is very busy. So, it's hard sometimes for me to see when you're, I'm not sure if it's possible to have a more plain background, because what happens is that it's harder for me to see you in front of everything else. So, I'm not purposely, I'm not ignoring you by any stretch. So, maybe if you raise your hand, if you just maybe just move it a little bit closer to the screen, that will help me to see it. Go ahead.
Like that?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start with a question or two to Ms. Santucci, because I think we need to understand what a crucial element to this pilot is the snow removal piece. And when I say snow removal, I don't mean winter control. In the report, it actually explains about, I don't know if counselors have actually dawned on them, what snow removal means in this context. So, maybe Ms. Santucci can explain what the snow removal means and why it's so important for the roadway.
Santucci?
So, snow removal is, just what it says, the removal of snow. So, in the downtown city area, we typically will remove snow after a period of time after we've had a big snowfall, because there is nowhere to put that snow. So, we bring trucks in. We bring our graders in. It's quite an operation to remove the snow from those areas. We typically do the downtown around the hospitals. We do bridges in order to remove the snow after a larger snowfall or after numerous smaller snowfalls.
Thank you. So, yeah, because, I mean, people think snow removal is sometimes just plowing, but it's, I've seen it in my district, the grader in the middle of the night, you have to be up, but I was working night shift, so I've seen it. The grader goes down the road. It scrapes all, everything, the entire snowbank, everything into the middle of the road. And then there is another heavy machine coming behind, usually a large snowblower, that blows that middle windrow that's been plowed in the middle of the road. Luckily, there's no traffic into a dump truck, right? And this way, tons of snow can be removed from these congested areas. Why is it important in the downtown and in my district and Counselor Neil's, Counselor Hudson's and the other downtown district? It's because, well, Counselor Hudson mentioned the lack of the boulevard. So, let's just use Baggett Street as an example. And I actually wanted to ask about that. So, the last major snowfall, we got like a big, big snowfall. And then now there's still large piles all through my district and probably Counselor Hudson's as well and possibly all the areas of the city. Is it just a matter of volume? Is there a reason why, like Baggett Street, which is a bus lane, has not had snow removal yet in January? Like, what's going on there? What's, what, how do we prioritize that work?
I can't answer specifically on Baggett Street now. I could find that answer for you and get back to you on that.
Yeah. So, thank you, Ms. Santucci. I'm just going to jump in, Counselor Strop. So, the item that's in front of us is the weather-based parking ban. So, I'm just going to ask just to keep the discussion comments on it.
Yeah. Well, I'll explain exactly why. It's, I should have taken photos and you'd understand. But picture four-foot snowbanks, four feet wide, where the parked cars used to be on the stretch of Baggett Street in between Queens and Hotel de Hospital. Okay, so, so that stretch with all the express buses, the 501 and the 601, all the express buses use that stretch. Now, there's a four-foot wide, tall snowbank that has pushed all of the parked cars four feet into the, into the middle of the boulevard. So, there's effectively only one lane. And when you're talking about a bus, there's only one lane on that Baggett Street corridor, right, right as we see, as we speak. So, if there's two express buses coming in opposite directions, they can't both get through. So, that, so the question is, how long does it take to clear such an event? Because we're now several weeks past, we're two weeks past that winter event and it hasn't happened. So, it doesn't seem realistic that we'll be able to actually have success with this pilot, judging on present day. So, maybe Public Works could comment on the delay for the snow removal.
Okay, so are you talking in, maybe just in general terms then, Ms. Santucci?
So, as I said, we definitely prioritize our work. We worked very hard after that event. If there are areas where there are concern, I can take a look at those, but I don't have a definite answer for you on specific rotations that I could speak to tonight.
Okay. Forget about Baggett Street for now, but I mentioned Baggett Street because it is, it is an arterial route and it is also an express bus route. So, you would think whatever system we're using, it wouldn't be left as is, because it is, it is an issue. I'm surprised Kingston Transit hasn't said anything. Anyways, the point being that this pilot is not just as simple as saying, oh, there's less snow in December and March, so let's try something different. That's something different is it compelling every single car that parks in a route that needs snow removal in a timely manner to not do so after a winter event. It's not just communication. It's will of these people to move their cars and on fairly short notice. So, I suspect what's happened on Baggett Street is that they just, there's always been parked cars along there. So, the snow removal has been impossible and we haven't decided to tow them. It's probably that simple. But that's going to happen with this pilot. So, I really hope that the So I really hope that the report after one year is, it will contain the, uh, information about the, uh, roadways that were affected by the accumulation of snow in the downtown and the delays to get snow removal. That information was necessary for this debate tonight, and it's disappointing that it's not, that you're not able to answer that question.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay. We will call the vote then on clause one. All those in favor? Opposed. That carries by a vote of one councillor Strout opposed. Okay. Moving on to clause two, Confederation Basin Acquisition. Okay. Uh, we will call the votes. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Shill.
Yes, your worship, uh, my question is really to staff, and that is the, the toxic, potential toxic components of this property. Has this been budgeted for potential cleanup in the future? And if not, uh, what is the mitigation methods considering, uh, there's been discussion of cleaning up inner harbor?
Mr. Hugh.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Ms. Mayor, and thank you councillor Chappell. So through you, Ms. Mayor. Environment Director Paul McCauchy is on the, uh, the call. So I'll ask Paul to, uh, to answer your question. But, um, um, the condition for the, the, uh, deal to receive the property, uh, from the federal government is to take it in as this, um, uh, situation and no cleanup is identified, uh, to be, uh, to be done based on, uh, the, uh, the risk management. But, uh, I'll turn it over to, uh, to Environment Director Paul McCauchy.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah. So the risk assessment work that was provided to us by the, uh, federal government for the property indicated that there was no immediate remediation action needed. Uh, but as a part of our normal property due diligence process, we did undertake our own, um, risk management plan to make sure that, um, if we were to take over the property, we could continue to operate the marina without, um, increasing levels of contamination that are in the sediment, um, uh, or disturbing sediment that, that is deeper down and buried. So we've done that and provided it to the, uh, to the, uh, wreck and leisure department who operate the marina. And, um, while there's no physical remediation that would be, uh, required, there are administrative controls required within the marina. So it means, um, certain types of, um, moorings and so forth have to be placed so that they don't disturb the sediment, uh, in, in, in the harbor.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll hold the vote then on clause two. All those in favor? Opposed. And that's carried. Okay. Moving on to report number 22 from planning.
Moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Neil, that report number 22 from the planning committee be received and adopted.
Okay. So that is just the one clause approval of application for zoning by law amendment two thirty seven Morewood Avenue and six from the street. All those in favor? Opposed. And that's carried. And to report number 23 from heritage Kingston.
Moved by councillor Doherty, seconded by councillor Osterhoff, that report number 23 from heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
Okay. So there are a number of items in, in the report. Would anyone like any of the items separated? Not then we will vote on the entire report as a whole. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed. And that's great. Okay. On to report number 24 from municipal accessibility advisory committee.
Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Holland, that report number 23 from municipal accessibility advisory committee be received and adopted.
Okay. So there are three, three clauses, 2022 municipal accessibility advisory committee work plan, appointments to awareness and education working group and appointments to the built environment working group. So if there are no suspicions, we will vote on everything as a whole. All those in favor? Opposed. And that's carried. Okay. We have nothing from committee of the whole, uh, information reports. If you have any questions, just raise your hand as they them. Uh, number one, report on real estate transactions completed from July 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021. And the bylaw number 2016 dash one eight nine. Number two, quarterly report Kingston Economic Development Corporation Q4 2021. Number three, update on meeting between the Kingston pickleball club and the tennis clubs of Canada. Okay. We have no information reports from members of council. Uh, on to miscellaneous business. Uh, we have a few motions here. So first, uh, moved by councillor Ossanic, seconded by councillor Hill, that the nomination of Niall Odie to the cataract resource protection committee representing the central area be supported. Number two, moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor Neil, that is requested by Paola Hunter dieticians at Kingston Health Sciences Centre. Councillor proclaimed March 16th, 2022 is dieticians' day in Kingston. Number three, moved by deputy mayor Holland, seconded by councillor Hutcheson, that is requested by Suzanne Miranda, gardening Kingston. Councillor proclaimed 2022 as the year of the garden in Kingston. Uh, and number four, moved by councillor Ossanic, seconded by councillor Neil. But notwithstanding section 3.1.4 subsection five, the first capital place illumination policy, council approved the application by Mayor Luchek Ukrainian Canadian Club of Kingston for the illumination of City Hall and Springer Market Square in February 6th, 2022 to standard Ukraine. So we will call the vote on those motions. All those in favor? Opposed. And that's carried. Okay. On to new motions. We have three new motions tonight. First motion, moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor Ossanic. Where his private Jesse Larochelle, a member of the Canadian Armed Forces, while fighting in the war in Afghanistan in 2006, defended his unit's position, saving many lives in the process, demonstrated an unparalleled sense of duty and commitment to his fellow soldiers. Whereas private Larochelle was awarded the Star of Military Valor, first role in the battle. Whereas a veterans group known as Valor in the Face of the Enemy are requesting that this young hero's Star of Military Valor be upgraded to Canada's highest honor, the Canadian Victoria Cross. Whereas there was a petition before the Minister of National Defence, which aims to upgrade private Larochelle's Star of Military Valor to the Victoria Cross. Therefore, it be resolved that the council of the city of Kingston add its voice and support the request by local veterans on behalf of Valor in the presence of the enemy to have private Larochelle awarded the Canadian Victoria Cross. And that a copy of this motion be forwarded to the Governor General Mary Simon, MP Mark Garretson, Minister of National Defence Anita Nand, and Valor in the presence of the enemy. Councillor McLaren, uh, you have the floor.
Thank you. So this came to me from a constituent who is also a veteran, a member of that group and a veteran of the war in Afghanistan. And, uh, it's the opinion of a lot of military veterans that, um, this particular award of a military, uh, the Star of Military Valor, um, is appropriate, but not sufficient in the sense that the Victoria Cross is a better recognition of the events of the duty of the, of the work or the, the actions of this particular individual. And that's what they are looking at. So from what I've heard, um, private Lacharelle volunteered to be at this observation post when they were shorthanded. It was critical because it prevented, it allowed for advanced notice that there would be, that there might be an attack coming from that direction. As it turned out, there was an attack. His observation post was hit by a rocket. And this is not like it is in the movies where, um, a blast happens, a fireball happens and the, the hero jumps out the window and scathed. There is a shockwave and this shockwave hit private Lacharelle pretty much directly. It burst out his eardrums. Essentially it made him deaf for a little while. And after that, he, when he could hear, he couldn't hear where noises were coming from. You need two ears to do that. So if you can imagine a certain amount of terror at hearing footsteps, gunshots from all around you, but not knowing where they're coming from, you can imagine what he was going through. At the same time, the shockwave also dislocated or disconnected his retina. If this is the idea, the inside your eye, the part that holds the, 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 the cells that actually see comes off and falls inside your eye. It's like something covering your eye and you can't see, you've lost your depth perception. And if you're in the middle of a fight, that's never a good thing. Now, one of the things that, um, happened, that is part of the rules of war is that once you are hurt, you have fulfilled your duty. If you continue to fight when you're hurt or injured, you're going beyond the call of duty. And in this case, this is essentially, this is exactly what happened. He was flown from his observation post, knocked unconscious, must have had a concussion at least. Very likely broke his back and his neck at that time. Yet he still had the ability to fire with excruciating pain, a rocket launcher and machine guns to help defend that spot until relief could be reached. Now, I've had a back injury. It wasn't serious, but if I, it wasn't broken or anything, but I was in excruciating pain for weeks. But I cannot, I can't imagine how much harder it would be to actually fire a machine gun and a rocket launcher with two vertebrae broken. This is what he did and it saved at least 23 people in his unit, giving them advanced warning that there was an attack coming from that direction. The military vets of that era of that, in that, uh, conflict believe that this goes far beyond what the star of the military valor is meant to be for, which is defined as conspicuous acts of valor in the face of the enemy. The Victoria Cross adds the word most conspicuous and extreme devotion to duty in the face of the enemy. And it has never been given out before or since its inception in 1993. But experts in military feel this way. But somebody in Ottawa seems to think otherwise. And that's why this petition is there. And I think we should support it because this guy has done an incredible amount for Canada. He was called on to do things and he did it well beyond the, the scope of his duty, well beyond most conspicuous and easily uh, and extreme devotion for duty. And for that reason, I'm asking you to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay. We will call the vote then on new motion number one. Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Shill, go ahead.
No, I would just like to, uh, thank councillor, um, McLaren for bringing this forward. Very, very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. We will call the vote then. All those in favor? Opposed. And that's carried. On to new motion number two, moved by councillor authorities, seconded by councillor Hutcheson. Whereas Sedarius Developments Limited, Kingstown Development Corporation, foot and consultants incorporated, submitted an application for an official plan amendment, zoning by law amendment and draft plan and subdivision for the property known as forty Sir John A McDonald Boulevard. As the delegation of authority by law allows for council to bump up applications to the planning committee and to council. Therefore be resolved that the final approval of the plan of subdivision be bumped up to council. And all future associated applications for site plan control approval that form a part of the subdivision development from Sedarius Developments Limited, Kingstown Development Corporation, foot and consultants incorporated for the property known as forty Sir John A McDonald Boulevard, uh, outlined in, in the record is noted to be bumped up to the planning committee. Councillor Green, uh, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure my fellow councillors, you're not surprised to see this bump up motion. It is for the P4W, um, property development. It's actually a huge development, including, um, several buildings, um, that are planned there. A hotel, a retirement residence, and in the future, some high rises as well. So this is an important property. It's also part for heritage, um, property included with the P4W. Um, actual building will be also redeveloped into housing. So I'm sure you understand why it's important for our community that this will be bumped up to the planning committees. And just ask people to support it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Councillor Hutcheson.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Okay. Yeah. Councillor Hutcheson, your, your mic is a little bit, um, little so we can hear, but it's not great sound.
Any excuse you need not to listen to me. Okay. So, um, and I can understand it too. So my apologies. It's been like that all night. I've turned everything else off. Unless I turn you guys off, I've got nowhere else to go. Okay. So I just want to support councillor Doherty. This is, I, you know, especially those of us on planning, this is business as normal. And is well deserved. This is a huge project in, it takes interesting and exciting in many ways. But, you know, it deserves a full public hearing as well in all the stages that we can afford. So I just asked you to support councillor Doherty and this mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay. We will call the vote then on new motion number two. All those in favor? Opposed. And that's carried. Okay. New motion number three, moved by deputy mayor Holland, seconded by councillor Kylie. Whereas the fundamental right of religious freedom is protected by the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Whereas Islamophobia is defined in the Ontario Human Rights Code as stereotypes, bias or acts of hostility towards individual Muslims or followers of Islam in general. And in addition to individual acts of intolerance and racial profiling, Islamophobia leads to viewing Muslims as a greater security threat on an institutional, systemic and societal level. Whereas more Muslims have been killed and targeted hate attacks in Canada than any other G7 country in the past five years because of Islamophobia, including most recently a terror attack that took the lives of four members of the London Muslim community, six murders in the Quebec City mosque attack, the killing of Mohammed Asli Mzafas at the IMO mosque in Toronto, violent attacks on racialized women wearing hijabs, hateful rallies in front of mosques. Whereas the National Council of Canadian Muslims, NCCM, is an independent, nonpartisan and nonprofit organization that protects Canadian human rights and civil liberties, challenges discrimination, Islamophobia, builds mutual understanding and advocates for the public concerns of Canadian Muslims. Whereas in collaboration with the Canadian Civil Liberties Association and the, uh, CCLA and the World Sikh Organization WSO, the NCCM is part of a legal challenge to build 21 legislation that makes it illegal for Quebec workers in the public sector to bear libis symbols. Whereas municipalities like Brampton, Calgary, Durham Region, London, Markham, Milton, Toronto, Ottawa, Whitby, Winnipeg and Victoria pledge to contribute to the legal fund challenge bill 21 and its impact on the Muslim community. Whereas the NCCM has provided recommendations to combat Islamophobia at all levels of government, including at the municipal level, action items to eliminate street harassment, provide public education, mentoring opportunities and celebrating the contributions to Canadian Muslims. Whereas municipalities like Brampton, St. Catherine's, Toronto, Ajax, Hamilton and London have endorsed NCCM's municipal recommendations to address Islamophobia in whole or in part. Therefore be it resolved that the city of Kingston pledged $10,000 from the working from reserve to the NCCM, WSO, CCLA and all legal funds challenge bill 21. And that the NCCM anti-Islamophobia recommendations from municipalities be referred to the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee for consideration. And that the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee provide recommendations, the city of Kingston specific recommendations based on the NCCM recommendations to council no later than the end of Q4 2022. Deputy Mayor Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Um, and yeah, first I'd like to thank everyone, members of council colleagues who have had a chance to have some discussions, um, with over the last few days and weeks, uh, and, and in particular, members of, um, the Muslim community who have helped, helped, um, bring this initiative forward. It, 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 there's a lot in this motion as you've probably all noticed. Uh, and the reason for that is that there is so much work to do. Um, I had an opportunity on Saturday to participate in the, uh, prayers for peace and remembrance. Um, the fifth year anniversary of the Quebec City mosque shooting, which is one of the events referenced here. And one thing that struck me at that event was, first of all, how beautiful and moving it was, of course. But how the members of faith communities were collaborating and working together and how they how seamless, how the event, um, it, it was clear that they'd done it before in, in essence. And that is the sad reality that we have had to come together and, and members of faith communities have had to come together over the past years. And I know members of council over the past years. And I know members of council, all of you will know and remember um going back twenty years to to times incidents in your own lifetime where you were a witness in a way to a terrible event uh that was a targeted attack against someone because of their faith. So the the fact is, um, there the first clause of this motion is really the most important one, but it's one we take for granted. Um, there are fundamental rights uh to protect religious freedoms in Canada. And and as we've heard from delegations, those rights are not protected equally. The the recommendations, so there's two parts to the motion. One is to help empower uh the EDI committee, and it's a relatively new committee, and they're doing great work. And Counsel Neil and I are are members of that committee. Um, they're they're quite new, and and this is, and there's lots, again, there's lots that they need to deal with. Because, uh, as was mentioned, we haven't had such a committee or or staff resources in place before this. So so they'll be doing work of all kinds, and this is one part of that work. So so in part, working, learning from the National Council of Canadian Muslims and our local Muslims, uh, we we thought that it was important to have a specific initiative on anti-Islamophobia here in Kingston. Um, and that will be brought forward to the committee. And and I know that most members of council that I've spoken to understand that that's necessary and are happy to see that forward. I also know that there's some concern about the uh part of the motion that is targeting legislation in Quebec and seeking um a financial contribution from the city of Kingston to fight that um that legislation in the courts um as other municipalities have done. So obviously, the rationale to bring this forward is that other municipalities have done that. And and the reason they have is because they've recognized that we need to take a leadership role. Uh, and and I think, again, you know, just going back to what members of the delegation have said, it's important not to just mention that we stand in solidarity or that we are in opposition. Um, that does not do enough to help members of our community feel safe. Uh, and that's our job. You know, frankly, it it is important that we take their their fears uh very seriously, and I think this contribution is an important part of that. Um, the the other members of the other um sort of the religious symbols aspect of this. It and as was mentioned, I think another member, another um one delegation spoke to the fact that we also have residents here in Kingston who come and they they go to university or they go to college, and they have they have ambition to work in specific fields and
thirty seconds.
Thank you. They should know that we support them um as members of this community, but also that we care about their future. And we care, we we want to know that they're here in Kingston um feeling safe and that also that that when they move on from Kingston, wherever they may go, that their rights are protected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Constable.
Thank you, and I want to thank the mover and seconder for bringing this forward. I think it's an excellent motion and probably overdue. Uh, I just want to point out that it's a it's a false uh idea that somehow, because the dominant predominant culture is included in 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 the Quebec motion, that somehow it's an equitable motion. And the reality is that uh I don't if any Christian cross anything that happens in in Quebec has been altered. But the reality is that the our minority, visible minority groups are more identifiable, if you will. And that shouldn't bring any additional issues forward against them. And so this motion by including all religions, in fact, is is a fallacy. The people who are being uh impacted mostly in in Quebec on this, uh on their law, are indeed visible minorities. And we should, we should be aware of that, and we should take exception to that, and this motion does exactly that. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Counsel Hudgeston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I agree with the first, the previous two speakers so heartily. When they name those incidents that happened against uh in particularly Muslim uh people, um but also other religious groups as well. Um, it's it's not justifiable. It's it's very disturbing and uncalled for, and that's saying the least of it. So on the other hand, I, well, not on the other hand, an additional other aspect to this should be recognized and thanked, and that and that's why I've asked the clerk to put up a motion that puts this in context of the politics in Quebec and in Canada. And I quick start it.
So that's a Hudgeston, maybe I'll just just pause there. I'll read the motion to amend and then I'll
go ahead.
Uh, so this is a motion to amend moved by Counsel Hudgeston, seconded by Deputy Mayor Holland. That new motion number three be amended by adding the following is the final whereas clause. Whereas Kingston City Council recognizes the right and need for the National Assembly of Quebec Assemblée Nationale to pass legislation to positively protect and advance Quebecois culture. City Council also recognizes that elements of Bill twenty-one have negative and unnecessary implications for the civil rights of Quebecois and Canadians. Okay, um, so it's just adding the wording in that whereas clause. So um so Constable, I will restart the your uh your time and your
Okay. Fast as hell. We all know that in our history as Canadians, we've had differences and difficulties between English and French speakers. And going back to the Quebec Act, every little historical whinge has been analyzed and followed. And so what I'm trying to draw then to do the first part of this whereas clause is to recognize that that's the case, and by and at least take a nod towards why would a Quebec government pass this law in the first place? And that's because the English after conquest didn't treat the French very well. In fact, really rather poorly. There were members, uh, as a young person uh looking it up, and sure enough, French workers were paid considerably less per hour than English workers. Okay, and that was used to divide labor at the time. So and and I'll remind you that in the mid nineties, we had a um we had a referendum in Quebec, which only passed by a few tenths. So the purpose of this whereas clause is to that has not gone away. I mean, I'm happy we still have the country we do, but that issue of the divide between English and French has not gone away, and it's connected to the role of the church played and the fact that Quebec tends to have a different attitude towards religious symbols than the rest of Canada. So, and I'm speaking very roughly there. So that's why I added the second part, which indicates that we do not agree with the way they've gone about this. It's negative and unnecessary. Do positive things to promote and maintain the French language is, in my opinion, the right way to go. And they that has been done in different ways and will continue to be. But to have negative ones where you take away the civil rights of other people is not the process to follow. That goes down, as it was pointed out by one of the presenters, this law in its construction can be applied to any number of people. And that's enough reason to oppose it. But it's also not helpful in bringing people together. Premier Legault was saying about bringing Quebecois together. Well, I would say, Mr. Legault, what are you doing with this law? So I I just think we should be able to point to, we recognize the context of the law. We just don't agree with elements of Bill twenty-one that's that remove other people's civil rights. It's not a positive way to go about this. So that's my argument for this whereas clause. So so it can't be just dismissed in Quebec that we don't get it. Because that's and that's the route Premier Legault took during the last federal election. And that's why the federal parties will not come up against it, because they don't know where, you know, how to deal with this. So we can point the way. Some things are positive, some things are really negative. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Counsel Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and I want to ask a question to staff about this. And I didn't realize that the amendment was coming, so I apologize in advance if this is loaded. But if we're talking about donating money to a legal challenge and then providing this rationale which justifies the ability of the Quebec government to make legislation in their interest, does it not undermine the stance and frankly, does that even matter? So I didn't think we'd be debating Quebec nationalism tonight, but I think it's important we make sure our ducks are in a row if we're wading into these waters.
So uh so I'll attempt to answer that and then I will refer to uh to anyone from staff that came to correct me or add to it, but my interpretation of the motion is that we are not, we are not joining the legal fight, that we are not a part of the legal fight. We're simply a pledge of dollars towards the parties that are involved in legal fight. So I would suggest that probably is not a concern, but I'm happy to approach it if if anyone with more legal knowledge than me wants to. Ms. Morley, I was hoping you might jump in.
Thank you, through your worship. You're absolutely correct. The city of Kingston is not a party to this legal challenge. It would simply be a pledge of um dollars to the cause, so I don't see any conflict between those two provisions.
Thank you. Okay, uh, anybody else on the amendment only? Deputy Mayor Holland.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Um, so the I I you'll notice that I've seconded this. I um because I do realize that some members of council had have have had or might have concerns about uh jurisdictional issues, and and thank you to staff for clarifying that in terms of the legal um component. But I think, you know, reflecting and commenting on another government and in particular, another province and what they're doing is sort of something that people have brought up. So I thought this this would be helpful in um explaining in part uh or providing that context, and I appreciate Counsel Hudgeston's efforts to do that. I just wanted to add one thing. Um, I I support, I'll support the amendment based on that, but I do think uh it's important to go a little bit further, rather than to just say that um there are sort of internal struggles, or and I'm not speaking to the language issue at all, don't worry, but that um I think it's important to recognize that this was an attempt, this bill was an attempt to institutionalize xenophobia. Um, and that is the rationale uh for the original recommendation, which is to fight this, to to support uh um the efforts to um combat this this legislation. I just wanted to make that clear. The it the reality is, as Counselor Neil mentioned, uh, the othering that's taking place is 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 based on race. It's based on um a visible status, uh religious symbols and a and a visible minority status. And that's something that we or any individual who is not a target of that racism or discrimination need to start standing up against, because I think as as one of the delegations mentioned, if we continue to to lead that battle to those who are in it, who are directly affected, uh, we won't be doing enough. Thank you.
Uh, anybody else on just the amendments, but it's just the inclusion of the clause presented by Counsel Hudgeston that speaks to that piece of Quebec, right? Welcome back to the main motion and law for larger comments discussion. So it's your hand next.
Thank you, Worship. I I actually, it was Counselor Kylie's comment that with Ms. Morley that provoked this question related to the amendment. And the question um for for staff is is simply, um, has there been any other precedents in the history of Kingston where the city of Kingston has donated money to a legal fund outside of our province, outside of our jurisdiction?
So Constable, I'm going to hold you on that one. That would be a question for the main motion. So
Oh, sure.
Then, yeah, because the amendment is just talking about this addition of this whereas clause, it would be independent of the, you know, the donation. So we'll come to, uh, anybody else on the amendment itself? Counsel Ball.
Thank you, Worship. I kind of had similar thinking, but mine's not attached to the financial interest. I guess my question would be in 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 staff's history as far back as anybody can go. Has there been a motion where the city of Kingston has made comments on the nationalism of Quebec and the maintaining of Quebec culture? Because I'm not really sure that that's something we're we're really expert on or or designed to do. So is that something that has happened within, I guess, the last ten, twelve years to staff's knowledge? Because we're wading into other jurisdictions that I'm not sure. I mean, I married a French Canadian, so I'm not sure what everybody else's expertise is here. I certainly wouldn't consider myself an expert, but we're wading into other people's cultures, and I just think we need to be very careful here. So I I'd love an answer on the last time we've made comments on Quebec nationally.
So so I think it's a, I think it's a fair comment in the discussion debate, so I'm not ruling that out or I just, I think it might be a little bit unfair to put staff on the spot.
Fair enough. I just, yeah, I I just wasn't sure if it had happened in recent history.
Well, I'll tell you what. Counsel Ball, you and I have been on council for seven years. I can't think of anything. Oh, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk to the rescue. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to uh close that the line of thinking. Um, in all the years that I've been here, I have no recollection of such action being taken.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer.
Okay, um, anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Constable, it's your motion to amend if there's anything else you want to say.
Okay, no, I I said much everything I have to say. I don't think it takes away from the main thrust of this motion. It just puts it in context, in a context that this sort of uh motion, which is about human rights, not about local uh jurisdiction, really. But it it puts it in in that context and is something that we will have to deal with, and we are having to deal with, and I think we should recognize that and that there's no easy way around it. And um and, you know, we can still, I think the motion and the main motion makes itself perfectly clear of where we're coming from. I just wanted to um they said, put the context in place. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. So we will call the vote then on the motion to amend. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's okay, uh, now we are back to the main motion as amended. Let's give me a second. So Counsel Hudgeston, uh, you still have four minutes on the clock. If there's anything else you wanted to say.
I'll just say, I urge council to support this. It uh it isn't directly To say, I just say, I urge council to support this. It, uh, it isn't directly I think as the presenters put it, there's no escaping some kind of moral responsibility here. And in the sense that we have the opportunity to, um, assist this and that's essentially the federal government is said the same. When the challenge comes, they may contribute to it. So this is our chance to show the federal government they're on the right path. And as everybody knows, on our level, so has nothing to do with that. It's got to do with being a citizen and a human. Thank you.
Hey, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson and through you. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the delegations and let council know that I was part of the process, obviously, working with Deputy Mayor Holland on this. And I had some of the reservations that have been expressed just a moment ago as well around jurisdiction and working with some of the delegates, talking to city staff and coming to a rather simple conclusion, uh, which was twofold. One, if other cities are doing it, it's possible. It's not that we're breaking any jurisdictional lines as such. And two, that we have an excellent opportunity to put our money where our mouths are in, in terms of this. So we've done some work in terms of EDI within our own city, but pushing out beyond that and putting dollars to that to ensure that our residents are protected wherever they go in this country, I think is incredibly significant. So I hope we can support this unanimously. Thank you.
Actually, next is Counselor Ball.
Thank you, Worship and through you. Um, completely agree with the initial premise of the motion. Um, the, I guess the biggest thing that I've had comments from the public on is the attachment of the $10,000 to it. Um, especially during COVID year, all the pressures and everything on people's budgets and everything like that. So I had many people, actually, I did not have a single person say they were not in support of us showing our support to basically remove the parts of Bill 21, which caused, you know, a lot of distress and, and concern. But a lot of people did raise issue, uh, constituents of mine with the attaching the $10,000 to it, uh, from, from municipal funds, which are raised off people's, uh, property taxes. So comments and concerns were what kind of precedent does this set? What happens when the next ask comes and what kind of things do we do, um, in the future if, if this is said yes to? So, um, I did hear a comment, you know, putting your money where your mouth is. So this, this evening, tonight, um, during this meeting, I went and donated $800 to the Canadian Civil Liberties Association in support of, of this fight. So 13 members of council times $800 would bring you to 10,400. So that will be my personal contribution to this. I will ask that the $10,000 is separated out from the motion and I will vote against that portion. Um, simply because, not the original portion, but I will vote against the 10,000 simply because of the concerns raised by Kingston taxpayers and the fact that I will put my money where my mouth is. So I support the idea of this, but attaching taxpayers' dollars to it and opening up these floodgates into the future and setting a legal precedent really raised a lot of concern for a lot of my constituents and a lot of people across the city. So I will put my money where my mouth is. I've already donated $800. I challenged the rest of council to do the same and we could raise 10,400 together. If any other members of council have already done this, I would, I would welcome their comments and their feedback on this because that is how you put your money where your mouth is. It's not just going endless, endless mon, taxpayers' money is not endless. We have so many challenges now. We know that our coffers are all but empty through the struggles of COVID. So this is something where if we want to be community leaders, if we want to step up, that is how you step up. It's not going back to the taxpayer's pocket and saying, let's get more blood from a stone. If you want to bring forward a motion like this, that's fine. We can bring forward a motion. We can endorse it as community leaders. But when you start attaching money to this, remember it is not our money. It is the city's money. It is our taxpayers' money and it is collected from their property taxes. And there are seniors in our community and there are people that can barely afford to live and barely afford to stay in their house. So, I mean, we have to be cognizant of that. So my $800 is on the table and I welcome everybody else to join in that. So that would be my contribution. I will vote against the 10,000 on behalf of all the taxpayers of Kingston who have already been bled to death during these last few years with the strains of COVID. So if anybody else wishes to join me, I welcome that addition. Canadian Civil Liberties Association, you can pick greatest need, which I believe right now is this Bill 21 and the fight, uh, to, to basically bring some common sense into that and to reduce the bigotry and, uh, anti-Islamophobia that is part of that bill. Thank you.
Uh, next is Counselor Hill.
Thank you, Worship, but I'm kind of reminded of a couple of things. One of those, you know, you, you've watched, uh, this year in particular, lots of protests, uh, about lots of different things and certainly lots of protests in, in Quebec and elsewhere in Canada about this bill. And one of the things you always hear is the whole world is watching. Well, this part of the world is watching. And I think it's pretty important that a clear message that we find this absolutely reprehensible and we speak for our whole community on this, uh, is, is warranted. And the other is Sister Claire Fitzgerald, uh, and I, I think I referenced her before, but she was one who, who spoke to us at school boards and said, uh, you know, you, I can tell what's important to you by where you put your money. And, you know, when, when we say, uh, this part of the world is watching, it's not just, uh, um, uh, you know, uh, a paper thin kind of thing. It's, it's substantial. Uh, and we're gonna, we're willing to not just put our word behind this and our vote behind this tonight in terms of how we feel about this and how this makes country or this country a lesser country because of this bill. But it also says that we're willing to put our treasure behind this. Uh, and, you know, it's not substantial. A, a, at the end of the day, uh, at the end of the budget, uh, period, this isn't going to make or break the city of Kingston, but it is going to send a clear message that not only do we abhor this bill, uh, uh, not only do we think that this diminishes Canada, but this part of Canada, the part that we represent, uh, is willing to put not just our word, but also our treasure behind, uh, condemning it. So I will support this, uh, on all levels. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next is Counselor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson. I do want to, I think, um, the mover for this motion. I think it speaks very clearly and the amendment as well to, um, how we feel about it. And I really did appreciate the presentations as well. I didn't ask questions. Um, I certainly have learned a lot and, um, I do remember how much I even turned folklore, how much I learned to appreciate, uh, uh, the diversity of our community. And, um, I know I can speak on behalf of my own faith community and wanting to stand with them side by side and, uh, knowing that, um, it's an embarrassment. Quebec's law is an embarrassment to Canada. And, um, I, um, I think we all are feeling that shame tonight. Um, and so I, um, I'm, I'm surprised we haven't come up with this motion sooner in a sense, you know, we should be what we should be, you know, the, the challenge is speaking to a, a different provincial government and that's not new. It's kind of a new territory for us and and how do we do that? And how do we do it? Well, where I think we're doing it well. Um, and yet I also would like to speak to what Counselor Ball, uh, addressed and, and, um, I mean, I received calls on this as well, other concerns, complete support for the cause, but, uh, a, a grave concern on adding again to our tax load. And so what I, I think that we should be proud of tonight is that, you know, we, we are, we are coming to terms with the ugliness of, of, uh, you know, any, any repression of, uh, um, religious oppression in this country. And so, uh, but in, in, in specific, we are talking about Islamophobia and, 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 and all faiths. So I think that that's a good thing and we are addressing it. And when we as a community embrace the idea of the community events, you know, the celebrations at different times, I think we all can share in that in different months and, and that adds to the richness of it all and the authenticity. And so I don't think that we should, um, undermine the fact that I think maybe the monetary value that we attributed to it, it's not much. I agree. But there is a precedent and I think that it's outside of what we should be doing with taxpayers' money. So I am joining Counselor Ball and I'm going to give the $800 plus I'll pay for the administration fee. I want it to go to our freedoms because I'm a freedom fighter, just like every one of you. And I, I will go to almost no ends to fight for freedom and I celebrate that motion tonight. But I'll be, I'll be going even further. I can't, I would like it separated, the financial part for, for our city because I think that it's too easy to, to just throw money of our, of, of other people's money. I will show the substance of my belief by saying I'm sending my $800 in tonight. And I thank Counselor Ball for that idea and, um, I commend, uh, the movers and the seconders for the, the heart of, um, this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counselor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm just wondering what message would we send as a council if we were not to support this motion in its entirety? We're being asked as a city to support this motion and to support this legal challenge. And the legal challenge, $10,000 doesn't go very far when it comes to educating, uh, the public. And this legal challenge will educate people across Canada. I think we should be supportive, not just supportive of it. I think we should be, I think I would be ashamed if we as a city were not to say that we as a city support the legal challenge. $10,000 does not go very far in a legal challenge and we're going to benefit from it greatly. It's just for me personally, I think, like, there was a, a comment made earlier by one of my fellow counselors saying that we're not experts and we're weighing in on other people's cultures um, because we're weighing in on what's going on in, uh, Quebec. But it is state sanctioned bigotry. And I have to say for me, that's very personal. Uh, I am German and, uh, I, you know, I understand how dangerous a policy like Bill C21 actually is. It can creep in slowly over time and to demonize any other culture and to do it step by step is very dangerous. And we can never, ever think that it can't happen in Canada. There's a big sign up in Berlin that says it happened once, it can happen again. So I just say that I, I be careful. There's an important message that we're sending as a council and that includes the ask for a legal challenge. Thanks.
Okay, next is Counselor Chappelle.
Thank you, Worship. I'll go back to my question for staff, uh, and then I have some questions for the mover. So first of all, we're staff. Has there been any example of the city of Kingston paying for legal fees for a challenge outside of our jurisdiction, let alone into another province?
Thank you for that question, um, Mr. Mayor. Um, once again, I can indicate that I'm not aware of anything like that having happened in the past. So the answer, the true answer is no.
The Working Fund Reserve, uh, Mr. John, uh, Mr. Clerk, rather, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read question here. The, the Working Fund Reserve, has it ever been used to fund legal funds like this before?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm not aware of, uh, such action in the past.
Sorry, I had an issue with the internet, just flashed. Um, I did hear the answer, so thank you very much, uh, Miss Ballion. So my question for my, uh, my mover is, I'd like to understand if my fellow counselor has read the municipal act and understands our jurisdiction. Because it seems that other people's money and spend tax dollars on things that are not within the scope of jurisdiction municipal act. So I ask first of all, have you read the municipal act?
Uh, yeah, I don't think, I don't think that that is, uh,
I'll assume not then. We're supposed to be the stewards and custodians of taxpayer funds.
Point of order, point of order, Counselor Neil.
I believe, uh, that Counselor Chappelle said he assumes not. I think that's an improper assumption. Uh, I believe the recognition was that that was a rhetorical, negative rhetorical question.
So that would be more a point of privilege, I think, than a point of order. Deputy Mayor Holland?
Point of privilege. I should not be questioned about my underact.
So I'm going to rule, I'm going to rule right out. Counselor Chappelle, I'm going to ask you to withdraw. Comment. It was not fair, not necessary.
Friendly, I'm happy to withdraw. It's just the reluctance of answering just
No, 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 you can't. See, that's what I'm asking you not to do. But you can't throw in those comments after that. So I'm going to ask you to withdraw that and then please just continue with your comments, please.
Okay, well, I think the role of a, a second there is also to put oversight, not just be a cheerleader. And so I, my, my question is, what did, was there any consultation on this motion? With staff from a legal context or from the Working Fund Reserve where this is proposed to come from? And I can go through either the mover or the second.
Deputy Mayor Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Yes, um, the motion was circulated to staff. Uh, and the, for, for input on, um, the ask of the EDI committee and also for specific input on the, uh, financial implications. And we discussed the range, a range of contribution that would be, um, acceptable to staff and the range was 10 to $50,000. Uh, and we opted for 10,000, which was in line with the, um, similar sized municipalities who pledged um, toward this legal clause.
Right. And so I'm, I'm assuming that
I'm sorry, uh, Counselor Kylie, you wanted to
Yeah, I also asked the question. So maybe I just add, if I, if you, Mayor Patterson, that indeed I tried to make the comment earlier, perhaps I was unclear that my questions to staff were around jurisdiction and in those discussions and in discussion with uh, Counselor Holland, Deputy Mayor Holland and others on that email chain, it was deemed that this would be appropriate within, within our rights to make such a contribution.
Okay, so I guess my, another question then to staff, uh, Worship is, is, does this, does this allocation of funds out of a working fund reserve to legal challenges which we're not party of set the precedent going forward to other social justice and very important, I'm not denying that this is not an important issue, but I'm just asking if this sets a precedent for other issues to come forward and, and propose the funding legal challenges when I'm party of.
Uh, CEO.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, uh, Counselor Chappelle for the question. I think ultimately this is a political decision. There is no question that council may get other requests, just like you get as a council, various requests constantly for different things and different support. So politically you have to make a decision as to what you want to support. So what is in front of you is truly a political decision. The Working Fund Reserve is set up to enable expenditures that have not been budgeted for, that are one-time expenditures. So council does have the ability to decide to use a working fund reserve for such contributions.
And, and, and just to follow up, uh, CEO Hurdle, were, were you consulted and asked about the range of 10 to $50,000?
Thank you and now through you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, the draft motion was circulated, uh, to myself and a couple of other staff. What I provided as far as information to both Counselor Holland, Counselor Kylie, was that a number of municipalities had made contributions to this legal challenge and their contributions were ranging between 10 and $50,000.
Okay, well, I am very, very passionate about this issue. I'm passionate, just as my other colleagues, Counselor Oosterhoff and Counselor Ball, and I put my money where my mouth is. And, uh, I've donated $800 to the Canadian Liberties Association. And I put my money where my mouth is and I've donated eight hundred dollars to Canadian Liberties Association. And since I'm so passionate about it and since we seem to have no concern of where this money comes from, I'd like to move forward an amendment that we increase the amount of money to fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, okay, just give me one second. Uh, okay, so we have a motion to amend moved by councillor Chappelle, seconded by councillor Bone. To amend then the first resolved clause to change ten thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars. So I'll ask the clerks to. So, uh, so councillor Chappelle, the motion to amend is on the floor and you can speak.
Certainly, your worship, it it seems that there is no respect for the municipal act. And the motions like this comport as a political nature. And it seems to box principal councillors who wish to try to stay within our lines and our lanes of jurisdiction. So whether it's only ten thousand dollars, as councillor Doherty has suggested, it's not enough. And the range is up to fifty thousand dollars. Why not make it fifty thousand dollars and separate this motion to allow us to vote on the great work that will be coming from the EDI committee, but have the financial component and how it impacts our residential ratepayers directly voted separately. And so that that is, that is my proposal to to do that. And again, as indicated on the backdrop of my screen, I've already donated my money of eight hundred dollars to this.
Okay, so there is a motion to amend on the floor. It is only with respect to changing the dollar figure from ten thousand to fifty thousand. So. Thank you. So just so I can see everybody on the screen, is there anybody that wishes to speak to the amendment only? So that's only going from ten to fifty. Councillor Neil.
I'd like a ruling from the chair if I could. Is this contrary to the intent of the motion? Because it's almost like a poison pill amendment. Uh, councillor Chappelle wants to make it so that the fifty thousand, if passed, nobody on council clearly should vote for it. So.
So you've asked for a ruling, so I'm gonna classify that as. So here's what I would say. So, so what you put forward relies on a motivation that may or may not be true. So my ruling as chair is always to take things at face value. Right? That's why we can raise points of privilege whenever a motive is put forward. So a council, we always, always give each other the benefit of the doubt. So for that reason, uh, it is not out of order. It is asked to the open for the discussion.
Okay, I now agree with you and I.
Point of order, councillor Hill.
So I want to challenge the chair on that ruling.
Okay, so we have a, we have a chance to the chair. So the rules are that the challenger and the chair each have focus in a minute, one minute to be able to explain their ruling and then council will vote. So councillor Hill, as the challenger, you can go first.
I think the intent of councillor Chappelle's motion is clear. It's intended to to undermine what's being proposed here tonight. I understand what you're, what you're trying to do in your ruling, Mr. Mayor.
So we have a, okay, a point of order, councillor Bone.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, that works both ways. If one person can't speak to somebody else's intent, another person can't speak to the mover's intent. Like, if you want the mover's intent, ask the mover. You can't just put it words in somebody else's mouth. It goes both ways.
Yeah, so so councillor.
Okay, I'll, I'll phrase it a different way. Does councillor Chappelle actually want the city to spend fifty thousand dollars on this?
Okay, so if that, if that is your argument for challenging the chair, councillor Hill, that's fine. I'm going to restate my, my earlier argument, which is as the chair, as the neutral body, trying to run this council as as fairly and neutrally as I can. That means I take everything at face value and do not question motive. So all I do as chair is just rule is the amendment procedurally in order. And anytime you change a dollar value in a motion, in my view, that is procedurally in order. That does not say that you can't then argue against whether or not that dollar power value should or shouldn't be changed. So I'm not, I'm actually just suggesting that that's a fair debate and a fair discussion. So, thank you. So, so with that, we will call the vote on the challenge to the chair. So if you vote in favor, you are voting in in favor of the challenge, which would support councillor Hill's position. If you vote against, then it's to support the ruling of the chair. Any just, any questions on how the challenge to the chair works before we do the vote? So call the vote then on the challenge to the chair. All those in favor? Or opposed? Okay, so that loses councillor Hill, Osannick, Doherty and Neil opposed. Okay, so, so the motion to amend is now on the floor. Councillor Chappelle has spoken to it. Councillor Neil raised a point of order, but you can still speak to it, councillor Neil, if you still you still have the floor, if there's anything else you wanted to say on the motion to amend.
Thank you. I, I think, uh, I believe that this is an attempt to, uh, to somehow make this motion impossible to pass. And for that reason, I, I don't think the intent of the mover and seconder was to spend fifty thousand dollars. The intent clearly was to spend a reasonable amount of money that other like-sized municipalities had spent.
Point of order.
And therefore, and therefore, I will vote against the motion.
No, point, point of order, councillor Chappelle.
Yes, your worship, as much as I love councillor Neil and look forward to a pint when it's asleep to do so. My, I was just sharing the concern of my colleague councillor Doherty that said ten thousand dollars on.
So a point of order, so a point of order and a point of privilege is not an opportunity to to re-debate. Because it's your motion to amend, you will have the last word on this page. Okay. Take a breath here. Who else would like to speak to the motion to amend? Councillor Doherty.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to speak to councillor Chappelle's intent because I'm sure, I, because I do suspect and agree with some of my fellow councillors who spoke earlier. But, um, councillor Chappelle, you did mention that you're bringing this forward because I said ten thousand dollars. It's not very much money. And when we can, when this ten thousand dollars is to support a legal challenge that will help educate and bring this entire issue to all Canadians, including residents of Kingston. In, when it comes to education, ten thousand dollars doesn't get you very far. But you said your concern is the impact on residential taxpayers. So I have a question for staff and what kind of impact ten thousand dollars would have on taxpayers or actually the new this this amendment? But how much fifty thousand dollars impact would have on taxpayers?
This can be, go ahead.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, the whether ten thousand or fifty thousand, that would be funded from the working fund reserve, so it would have no direct impact on a tax rate. Those monies are already in the fund now. However, they have been funded by by tax dollars. In terms of just a a percentage, fifty thousand would probably work out to something like point zero two percent of an increase or something smaller than that. So a very small amount is in in terms of what an actual increase might represent overall. But those funds would already be accumulated in the working fund reserve.
Just a follow-up question to, if I may, is you said that, but you you mentioned point zero two percent increase, but in fact it's coming from the working fund, so there would not be an increase. And when you said point zero two of the increase that isn't going to happen, that would be for the fifty percent, fifty thousand. So in fact, if we were to support this amendment and support this legal challenge for fifty thousand, and there is actually no increase and no impact to this budget.
Through your worship, yes, that's correct. There is no impact to this budget at all. It would be coming out of the working fund reserve. And yes, it would be even smaller than the point two, it would be like point zero zero four or something like that at the, if it went up to, if it was only the ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so since this is not leading to an increase in our budget, it's not going to have an impact on taxpayers. I'm, I thank councillor Chappelle for moving the amendment and I'm happy to support the fifty thousand. Thanks.
Okay, next is councillor Hill.
So I, I wanna, I guess ask the question again that I asked earlier. Does councillor Chappelle, the mover, actually want to see a fifty thousand dollar contribution? From the, from the tax, from the city coffers, from the, from the, from the fund.
I most certainly will, assuming that councillor Hill is also donating eight hundred dollars of his personal money to this mission.
Well, actually, I, I think now as a.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just gonna jump in on this. That's, that's not, that's not in order. That's not an acceptable piece in the debate, councillor Chappelle. You were asked a question. So councillor Hill has the floor. You, so, so you don't get to ask the questions, you are responding to the questions because councillor Hill is speaking with them. So it's back to you.
Well, just, I'm, I guess I'm still asking, does councillor Chappelle want to see a fifty thousand dollar or an increase from ten to fifty thousand dollars coming out of our general reserve to support this initiative? That's what he moved, so I'm asking if that's in fact what he wants to see happen.
What I want to see happen is this to be separated and that councillors try their own financial contribution equivalent to ten thousand dollars. So to answer your question, I don't support a fifty thousand dollar tax on our residents out of this fund.
But well then, how can councillor move something that they don't support? I, I, that's disingenuous and I think that's sort of was the point. Although I, I, albeit it, it didn't work the way I hoped it would, the point of the challenge to the chair. You, you can't move something that you don't actually want to see happen. That's disingenuous to the, to the voters, it's disingenuous to to council. So I think this is really, really inappropriate.
Sway councillor Hill, I'm still open to be swayed.
So councillor Chappelle, councillor Chappelle, you don't have the floor right now. Councillor Hill has the floor.
I think I've made my point, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the motion to amend? Uh, next on my list is councillor Bone.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, just in looking at some of the comments that, you know, ultimately, yeah, ten thousand dollars is is not that much. So I looked at some similar sized municipalities and interestingly enough, Ajax, which only has about ten to fourteen thousand more people than us, actually donated the full fifty thousand. So, um, and you know, in 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 hemming and hawing on this, um, I guess in the grand scheme of things, if ten thousand doesn't do a whole lot, I can kind of understand where councillor Chappelle is coming from, which again, if I heard the treasurer correctly, this, it won't affect tax rates because it's coming from the municipal fund reserve. But on the other hand, that reserve is built off taxpayers' taxes. So I, I mean, no matter how you slice and dice it, it still comes out of the city's reserve fund, which if we're gonna refill, we have to tax people through their property taxes. So I do understand the concern, but if ten thousand is 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 not really gonna do a whole lot and other like-sized municipalities have donated the full fifty thousand. Yes, I've already spoken to this. I think it, it's, I think it's a bad precedent to set. Whether ten thousand, twelve thousand, fourteen, fifty thousand, I do think that this is something that, you know, personally, uh, we, we are all like-minded on. I, I think the challenge here is that at what point do we stop just reaching into the taxpayers' pockets to just grab more and more money for things? This is a worthy cause of no doubt, of which I've already put my personal funds to. But in the grand scheme of things, if other like-minded municipalities have dug deep and found fifty thousand, then how are we to do any less? Or we simply say that we're not going to put our taxpayer dollars on something like this, but we will put our personal dollars onto them. In which case you can support it without actually digging deeper into the taxpayers' dollars. But I, I, I sort of see where councillor Chappelle is coming from here, whereas if we're gonna do ten thousand, it's almost disingenuous to say, well, we're willing to do ten thousand but not fifty. So I actually see it from the other side of things, which is we'll do ten but not fifty. So if, if you're, if you're in support of the ten thousand, I don't understand how you vote against the fifty thousand, because I would find that to be disingenuous. Because that's attaching a dollar value to something that you, that, that to morals. And and I just, I disagree with what we're doing as far as taking taxpayers' money to fund a jurisdictional fight in another jurisdiction in a province, even if I agree with the fight itself. So that's why I put my own money into the battle, but all of a sudden fifty's too rich, but ten is okay. What, what was the magic number? How do you, how do you move the motion to twenty-five thousand? Would that have been supported? Ajax just did fifty. Whitby is up to fifty. Durham region, like all these other municipalities of like-sized population are doing fifty. So why would we settle at ten? We're not being a leader at ten, we're being a follower. So either we are going to do the fifty and join these other municipalities, or we're gonna do what some of the municipalities said, which was, you know what? I support the cause, but I won't do a taxpayers' dollars because X, Y, Z. So what we'll do is we'll do it with our own dollars, or we will encourage fundraising, or I would have happily supported something that said the city of Kingston will contribute up to ten thousand or twenty thousand or whatever the number would be to match community donations. And then that truly would have brought the community together on this, instead of just saying, we're just gonna commit taxpayers' funds without actually consulting taxpayers. And that's another issue I take with this. We didn't go out and actually really consult the taxpayers and even give them a chance to match these funds. Heck, had we have done this properly, we could have probably raised up to a hundred thousand dollars and sent not just ten, which we've already heard is barely a drop in the bucket. But we could have sent close to a hundred thousand dollars to support this. So we, we didn't do it that way. We chose another approach. And unfortunately, you know, now we're taking the lower end of that to try to look like we're doing something. So I think at the end of the night, fifty is what you get, because if other people of like-sized municipalities have contributed fifty and we do ten, how's that gonna look? Somebody mentioned public perception at the end of the day, doing the bare minimum is not leading. So again, I will reiterate, I'm not in favor of taxpayers' dollars for this. I put my own money behind it to prove that. And I would happily challenge anybody to do that, because I think that's the approach we should have taken here. If we truly want to bring the community together, it's not by just arbitrarily reaching into our working fund reserve. After two years of COVID, which has already bled, been bled almost to death, and there's not a lot of money left in there. Actually, that's a great question for staff. How much money do we even have left in there?
This is only, only about whether we're going from ten to thousand.
Fair enough, okay. So could we actually get an answer on what's left in the working fund reserve?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So there is about with the committed funds that council's done to date, we have about seven point two million dollars sitting in the working fund reserve.
Thank you. And and one follow-up question there, Madam Treasurer, is what, what is a good target for municipality of our size to have in that reserve? Because that seems to be, have been depleted numerous times over, over my two terms on council.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, so we try to have around ten million dollars in, looking at what we might need for cash flow, for working fund, based on the percentage of our budget overall, so around ten million. So we have got some strategies longer term to try to bring that back up closer to that balance.
So, so it's fair to say we're lower than than we like and COVID's put some strain on the municipal budget. Thank you. So it's fair to say we're lower than than we like and COVID's put some strain on the municipal budget. Thank you.
Yes.
Next is Counselor Rose Hennig. And again, I'll just remind Council, we're speaking to the amendment only right now.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I do not support this amendment to $50,000. I think $10,000 is fine. This was never about the amount of money that can go towards the legal challenge in its totality. Where this came about is that the mayor of Brampton, Patrick Brown, did a call out to try to get 100 cities across Canada to donate to this legal challenge for Bill 21 in Quebec. So by putting our name forward, Kingston, not individual counselors, but as Kingston going forward, we're going to be one hopefully of the 100 municipalities. Well, that will, you know, support Patrick Brown in this challenge. And so like, that's how it came about. Brampton donated $100,000. When you do a per capita basis, we should maybe be at 17,000. I'm fine with $10,000, but not 50,000. But at least if we support the main motion, you know, keep however this goes. But if we support the main motion, putting Kingston forward, we're going to be one out of the 100 municipalities from across Canada that will be showing their support to fight Bill 21. And I'll just save other comments to the main motion. So for me, 10,000 is fine. I will not be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment only? I guess next is Deputy Mayor Holland.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And thank you, Counselor Senick. I guess the first question, just for the for this sake of people who are watching this debate. The if this amendment fails, the amendment to increase to 10 to $50,000, we're back to the $10,000 amendment, correct? Thank you. So another point clarification I want to make is that members of faith communities in the city of Kingston pay taxes. And so to differentiate between taxpayers and those who would who have asked, members of faith communities who have asked for this motion to be brought forward is problematic. The only other thing I want to say is that those members of faith communities that I had the opportunity to consult with on this didn't have a specific amount in mind. That's why I consulted with staff. When when we looked, when I looked at the range, I obviously chose the lower amount with the intention of making that something that council would be more likely to accept for the reason of showing good faith, which was what the members of faith communities wanted to see from this council. So for that reason, I will not be supporting the amendment.
Next is Counselor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And through you, though I arrive at a different conclusion than Counselor Senick, I wanted to highlight the idea of a per capita amount. And in doing that, I recognize that we can't always divide council spending by the number of people in our community, because then we literally nickel and dime every decision we make. However, in recognizing the significance of what this legal challenge is, structurally, as a government challenging another government to say that we don't believe that what people wear as an expression of their faith should determine where they are able to be employed, recognizing how cataclysmic that could be if that bill is allowed to stand. I didn't think it was helpful actually to break down what $50,000 would mean for each resident in our community. And that is, we're asking essentially every Kingstonian to give 33 cents, a quarter, a nickel and a dime. And based on the tremendous compassion that we've seen in times of need in this community, especially around moments of religious and faith based discrimination, I think we have more than enough support for people to give a bit of change towards this. I will support $50,000. And I hope that we can look back on this whole debate and recognize it was a fairly low point, if not the lowest point in our term, that we just put everyone watching, especially the delegations who bravely came and told of their experiences tonight through unbelievably bad procedural wrangling on perhaps one of the most significant things that we've talked about in this term. So I will support $50,000. If it ends up being 10 or 50, can we at least please all of us come together and support the motion and give money towards this very good cause? Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair if I'm allowed to. Is that the right option, given that it's my motion?
It is your motion, but it's not your motion to amend.
I take the chair and I recognize you.
Thank you. So I'm going to follow my own procedural rules and make sure it's only to the amendment at this point. I will have a couple of comments and get to the back to the the main motion. So I'm going to support this amendment for a couple of reasons. Number one, I think it's important that as many members of council are supportive of the main motion as possible. This is about sending a very important message about our support for faith, ethnic communities, religious expression. And I know that there will be more votes than. Second, I think we've also heard some angst that we want dollars that are that have been raised locally to be spent locally. So what I would propose is that with $10,000, so which is what Counselor Holland brought forward initially on this, this is just fight to join the fight against Bill 21, but also then provide more fiscal room for us to be able to invest in local initiatives, to be able to support our faith communities, to be able to advance EDI issues. And of course, that's important as a municipality that we're focused on doing as much work as we can here locally. So this is the best way to be able to do both. There's been a lot of discussions around the table that try to make this into an either or. Either you did this or you did this. The great thing is, we have an opportunity to do many different things all at the same time. So for that reason, I will not support the amendment.
Thank you. I return the chair.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment only? Counselor Chappelle, you it is your motion to amend. You have the last one.
Thank you, Your Worship. Always tough to act a follow when you give such compelling remarks. And I I have expressed a number of times that we should really be sticking in our own lane. And for that reason, I'm supporting this motion to increase it. And and I will be voting in favor of the increased amount. But I really wish that we had actually thought of where that money would be spent better, and that is here in Kingston. Here in Kingston to support those in need, who are struggling, who have expressed issues. I do have a resident that I've spoken to on a number of occasions who's been subjected to racist attacks. And it's it's very disturbing to hear a person's story. So what frustrated me about this motion, the way it was set up, is that you basically, it's been packaged in a way that you can't vote against it. And there are principles that get bent, which is why I'm demonstrating how these principles get bent, and I'll be supporting this motion. So this amendment. So thank you very much for the opportunity to debate with you.
Okay, so we will call the vote then on the motion to amend. All those in favor? Opposed? And this is by a vote of five to seven. See if I can remember the five. We're in the minority. So Counselor Chappelle, Counselor Bone, Counselor authority, Counselor McLaren, and Counselor Kylie voted in the minority. Okay, so we are now back to the motion as not amended. Counselor Chappelle, you have two minutes left on the clock. If there's anything else you want to to say.
I like the motion to be split out to remove the financial component out of the motion. Is that something I have to do now or do I speak to it?
Counselor Bone has already requested that separation. So we will, when it comes to the vote, we will do two separate votes.
Okay. So my my comment about this is I'm very passionate about minorities. You know, I certainly don't have the same shared lived experience, but I have traveled around the world and experienced many multiple cultures throughout South America, in the end Nepal, Pakistan, and been to these places and was, you know, I sort of stood out in those communities. And I understand some of the sights and the feelings you might feel not filling in with the same culture. So my message is really, I don't believe there's any room for any discrimination of any form, whether it's through religion, personal beliefs or creed, or even, you know, the the greatest boogeyman that people are talking about with with COVID. So we should really be respectful of everyone. I'm very much keen on supporting peace and loving initiatives and supporting everyone. I like to to say that what bothers me about this motion in its entirety, the way it's presented, is that it sets a dangerous precedent and that there are going to be other challenges that face our council, other community groups that face various issues. And I think that the best way, if this council wants to demonstrate that there is a passion about this, and I am, and Counselor Bone is, and Counselor Oosterhock is, then put your own money on the table, put your $800. And I hope that somebody in the media comes and asks if you donated, because you should donate if you believe in this cause as much as I do. Thank you.
Okay, next is Counselor Senick.
Your Worship, I support this motion. Again, just to reiterate that this came about from donating from the city of Brampton that Mayor Patrick Brown issued an appeal to 100 Canadian mayors to join the fight against Quebec's Bill 21, strengthen numbers from that way. And if we pass this motion, I'll be proud that Kingston is one of those 100 cities to fight it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a premier. Oh, so this time I won't hand it to you, Deputy Mayor Holland. I will go to the previous deputy mayor. Counselor Chappelle, would you take the chair?
I do and recognize you, sir.
Great. Thank you. So we're going to support this motion. It's very clear to me that although we're talking about a law in Quebec, this is not just a Quebec issue. This is a Canada issue. This is an issue that affects so many of our fellow Kingstonians. We've heard from many of them. It's really important that as council, that we take a step to be able to show that support. And that support can be shown in many different ways. And and, you know, certainly, I I commend and I certainly encourage people to to donate to this cause on a personal basis. But reflecting on the debate and the discussion we've had today, it's clear to me that as council, we need to send a message that as a city that we stand with and in solidarity with everyone in our community, those of all religious and cultural backgrounds and expressions. And that may be the best $10,000 we spend. Send that message. The fact is that money ends up in our working fund reserve because of good fiscal management from Kennedy and our staff. That basically, we we budget and then because of cost savings that we're able to have some money left over at the end of the year. And so money in that working fund reserve is because of of good financial management from our staff over the years. And so I think that in this case, taking $1,000 from that savings left over to be able to support this makes sense. And then it also gives us some fiscal room to then be able to support EDI measures moving forward. I was hopefully initially concerned about precedent here. But I can say then, in in my years, as minimum, I've never seen a situation like this occur. And I think it's important. So I will support this motion whilst the same. Thank you.
I return the chair back to recognize you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else that has not spoken that wishes to speak? Deputy Mayor Holland, you have the last one.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. So a few things, the and I don't, I don't make these remarks to sort of further divide any member of council or on this issue. But I just want to point out a few things because it was brought to my attention through the course of the debate by members of Muslim community who've been impacted by anti Islamophobia. As some of the language that was used this evening, including the phrase bled to death over tax, overpaying taxes, is is problematic in the context of discussing violence against individuals who've suffered. And and one in particular, one delegation remarked on having lost family members. So I just wanted to share that because I think it's important that, again, that when we're having these debates, that we are very conscious of the fact that we represent the entire community.
And I'm just going to intercept a point word.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just in no context did I mean any reference into any violence. It was simply a reference to taxpayers having, it's 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 a well known term. I apologize if it offended somebody and it was deemed insensitive. It was simply a reference to taxpayers being overtaxed. So I will choose my words more carefully in the future. Apologize for that.
Counselor Bone, Deputy Mayor Holland.
Thank you. Yeah. And thank you. That's that's great. The I mean, and appreciate it sincerely, because I think that is actually does get to a bigger point, which is that, yes, we've had a heated debate and it's, you know, we do this as 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 part of our roles. But the but individuals in our community feel like they're not included. And the the EDI committee was created to address that concern. And and moreover, not only do they not feel included, many of them feel as though they are not safe. And so initially, the contribution to the fund was important, the rationale that that I got. And that was that that was important for me to bring it forward was because this was what members of religious communities who felt targeted by legislation in Quebec wanted from this council. They wanted a demonstration that we took their feelings of safety and security seriously and that we would address that. This is how they wanted it addressed. And and in part, of course, going through the committee and having recommendations will build on all of that. But this was something important because it does send a message to the community. I understand the $10,000 for for members of the public who have concerns about fixed incomes. I've heard from residents as well. I don't take that amount lightly. I don't suggest that it's that we should be in perpetuity promoting or, you know, spending funds in other jurisdictions. I I brought it forward for the reason that I mentioned, people did not feel safe. This is what they wanted to see happen as a starting point, because these these horrific events continue to take place. We don't want to see them to take place here. This is a good way to build the kinds of education that we're that we're looking for. And frankly, I don't think we should be, I think it's a privilege to donate to the Civil Liberties Association to feel safe. You know, if if that's, members of the public shouldn't need that. They should, they rely on government for that. And that's why the dollar amount was put forward. I definitely applaud members of council who see that as an important way forward and and making contributions to these causes is very important. I encourage everyone to do it, and I will do so myself. And I thank everyone for the discussion this evening. I I hope you will support the 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 motion in its entirety. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to do two separate votes. Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to do two separate votes. So first, we will take the vote on the first resolved clause, and then we will do a second vote on the rest of the motion. Okay, so first, uh, first vote is on the first clause. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries unanimously. Okay, now we'll do a vote on the rest of the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries unanimously. So we'll note that um, the entire motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we have no new motion, no other new motions. Uh, are there any notices of motion? Uh, okay. Um, Madam Deputy Clerk, I was for minutes, please.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor O'Shanek, at the minutes of City Council meeting number four dash twenty twenty two, on Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty two, be confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's okay, we have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Madam Deputy Clerk, I was for bylaws, please.
Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Chappell, that bylaws one through three, five and six be given their first and second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Chappell, that clause two, twelve point six three, a bylaw number twenty twenty one dash forty one, be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws one and three, three readings.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
And finally, moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Chappell, that bylaws one through six be given their third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, I was for motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Kylie. All those in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.